Please keep all cell phones off or on my ring. Please remain standing for a prayer and a pledge to the flag.
My call to the meeting of the Warren County Commission, your order tonight, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Carl Bodman for the indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask Brett Mary to come forward and lead us in prayer. He's an elder at the Highway 56 Church of Christ and a longtime citizen of Warren County and native born and bred in Warren County and a business owner. Turn it over to Brett.
Appreciate you, Carl. Actually, my family's been in Tennessee for about two hundred years. Let us all pray. Father in heaven, as we approach the prayer this evening, we're truly thankful for this day, the blessings of this day, life itself, Father, life eternally by thy son Jesus Christ. Father, we ask your blessings upon this assembly here this evening. Father, we pray that they seek thy wisdom and precepts in carrying out the business of this county. We ask you to give them thy wisdom and knowledge and understanding to do so. Father, we pray that they always look to thee for guidance and thy hand and guidance. Father, we, we ask that you continue to bless this county as you so recently have, the great blessings of the fertile land and the landscape, the beauty of it, and the waters that run through this county. Father, we are truly blessed to live in such a county. Father, we ask you to watch over these men and women and be with them throughout their service here to this county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
We'll now turn it over to Mr. Kenny Moffitt for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Mr. Russell Pedego. He is a community leader and a lucky community. I want to read a short bio. Russell Pedego along with being a husband, father, grandfather, is also the maintenance supervisor of Warren County Schools, Nutrition Department, taking care of all aspects of the equipment for the ten schools, the prior employment at Carrier Corporation. He attended H V classes and keeps up with his continuing education through Tennessee School Plant Manager Association and through the manufacturer's training. He is the current president of Lucky C I C and president of the Woodman Lime Chapter 1077. He's a third generation farmer and is farming in Warren County specializing in Angus beef. He enjoys farming and raising a variety of vegetables in his garden. He's a firm believer in helping others by contributing his time and resources to those in need. Mr. Pedego.
If you would, do you want me to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now ask the part Carl's role.
Here.
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 Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffitt.
Here.
Jim McDuggan.
Here.
Gary Prager.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Chris B. Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruppin.
Here.
Thomas Savage.
Here.
Thomas S..
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Blaine Brooks.
Here.
We have fifty-three presents tonight. We'll move on with item number five, the adoption of our docket tonight. Motion, Mr. Bell. Second motion, Mr. Bell, the second from Mr. Prager. Do we have any amendments to the docket?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move special presentations to make it, I guess, nine A after public comment.
All right, I have a motion. I hear a second. That's second by Mr. Scott Kelly. All those in favor of the amendments say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Do we have any more amendments to the docket?
Mr. Chairman, we omitted the appointment of the chairman to the county commission, and I would like to put that as one A underneath business, and I so would.
I've got a motion, a second by Mr. Bell. And if all those in favor of amending the docket to make it one A, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Do we have any more amendments?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you have on your desk a proposed committee assignments list, and that was not listed in the docket, and I would like to make that one B under new business, and I so would.
Got a motion, and a second by Mr. Bodman. All those in favor of amending the docket, completing that under one B, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we're back on our regular docket. We've approved our, we're fixing to approve our regular docket tonight with all the amendments. All those in favor of approving our docket with amendments, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. If anybody wants to do public comment on anything on our docket tonight, see Mr. Hillis and he'll sign you up, and we will move on and start into our reports. The reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion we accept the minutes as written and dispense of the reading.
Second. Motion and a second by Mr. England. Motion for Mr. Savage and a second for Mr. England. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item number seven, our elected official departmental reports. Mr. Heath Knows, U T extension.
Ladies and gentlemen, y'all should have a copy of my report. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Hell, a second by Mr. Hillis. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, you want to report on how the chicken chain went at the fair this time?
They averaged, I'd say, nine dollars was a piece, was what I heard, so.
Thank you, Hal.
I did not know that number. Our new four H agent Nate was, he worked that, and I was a flipping funk cake, so. We had a good night on both of yous.
I, I heard that your work at the livestock show was your best work, though.
I'm always proud of that.
I, I'd like to add that I bought the cheapest rooster in the show, and it was the only rooster in the show.
Any more questions?
Thank you for your continued support.
You did a good job, man.
Thank you.
Questions, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to that report, Mr. Jim Diack.
Good evening, commissioners. You have my report. Do you have any, any questions for me?
Motion approved.
Got a motion, Mr. Hell, a second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions to the reported airport?
Jim, you might want to mention that you have breakfast this coming Saturday morning.
I was gonna wait to see if my report was voted in, but. Seven thirty to ten at the airport this Saturday. Everybody come out there, really have a good breakfast out there.
Go ahead and put a plug in for the D A A chapter.
Oh, the dinner. Yes, our Experimental Aircraft Association local chapter is having a dinner on October twenty-fifth, Saturday, to raise some money to hopefully get started on aviation curriculum at the high school and to help with other youth activities. And if you would like, you can go to their website, or we have brochures out of the airport.
Any more questions? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you for being here today. We move on to item number three, codes enforcement, Mr. Colin Willard.
Ladies and gentlemen, the court's got a copy of my report, so I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions at this time. Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Stout, and a second by Mr. Kalen. Any questions for the codes? Yeah. Yes, Mr. Jim.
What is the status of building up at E Show up there?
Are we talking in regards to their apartment buil-, uh, apartment buildings?
Yes.
So, the apartment buildings, the biggest one, the newest one, under construction, as of right now, as of today, they, they have a temporary occupancy for one of the wings. It's completely being sectioned off from the rest of the construction site, and there's two wings of it still under construction. The last time I was up there would have been about two weeks ago. We did the fire sprinkler suppression test, made sure there was no leaks in that. So, I would say, right now, they're hanging drywall. I mean, I would say by the end of the year, it, it'll be done. I don't want to, you know, speak for them. But, I mean, there's another two hundred plus rooms, pretty much coming in hot, for lack of better words.
Mr. Robson?
Yes, thank you. Can you confirm for me if they're requiring their own power grid? Is that accurate, for requesting it?
So, from what I've heard, I mean, I'm loosely in the loop on most things when it comes to public utilities, but I am in the loop. And what I've heard right now is they have the power they need right now. But from my understanding, they're getting pretty close to being tapped out from what the grid can handle up on the mountain. I think the same could be said about the water. Like I said, I know, I don't, I don't know for sure. I'm just kind of in a lot of email loops regarding.
Any more questions?
Cody care to touch on the update on the environmental codes and the progress in the judiciary system, and is that you can get a little update?
Sure. I know last time we met, I, Mr. Prater asked about those environmental codes, and I told y'all that, you know, we're, we're a little bit behind, and we're trying to get caught up real fast. Recently, we have, I think we've got eight or nine in court right now, which is really good. Usually, we don't, never have that many in court at the same time. So, it seems like, you know, the past three months since the last quarter, we've, we've gotten a lot more into court. We got a lot waiting to go in court. I will say that. You know, it's, it's one of those things that it gets front-loaded and then it gets rear-loaded real quick. So, it's like, we, we take it on a lot, and we get a lot into court, and then a lot of county business happens, you know, that, there's just Robert Bratcher's only one man, and there's a lot of county business, and there's a lot of people trying to get in our pockets and all these other things that he has to run interference for. So, but right now, as it stands, we got eight or nine in court. October, somewhere in the middle of October, we have another court date to get those completely out. We'll start with, the plan right now is to put nine more in court, so we're gonna do nine at a time and just cycle them through until we're back, back, you know, caught up, and then we'll start back with the onesies and thuesies.
All right, any more questions? Being none, all in favor of approving this report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to E M A, Mr. Nathan Hillis.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report of the activities over the past quarter. Before I move on with questions, I do want to bring everyone's attention to the section of upcoming events. You'll notice on your desk, you have a flyer that's got Lowe's and the T B A, TINA, and ourselves listed on it. That is, we, T B A has bought a large amount of Noah Weather radios. They're giving thirty-five to each county to give away at this event at Lowe's on the twenty-third from four to seven. It's about a forty-dollar radio if you were to buy it. We'll also be giving six hundred batteries to put in those radios, or anyone who needs batteries in their radio. Purchase a radio that night. We'll give you the three batteries that goes in the back of it. We'll also be programming those radios. Anyone has one that's old and needs to be programmed, they can bring it in. A lot of folks, I'm sure, have moved into our area and brought their weather radio with them. If they just plug it up, it probably won't work. But that, those signals are programmed in that radio, radio based on the area that we're in, so they may or may not have heard their radio go off in a while because they moved from another state or another part of this state, and that necessarily, that broadcast district has not been programmed in that radio. But that's an event, an event that's coming up pretty soon. Everybody's got a flyer on their desk. Anybody, there's some extras over here on this table for anybody in the audience that wants to take one of those with them. Those are just released this afternoon, so they've not made it quite to our Facebook page yet, but they will as of tomorrow. Also, on October the ninth, you have in your packets, the National Weather Service will host a storm spotter class in this room. That will happen to begin at six-thirty. It lasts about an hour and a half. If anybody would be interested in that and they want to sign up for that, the link is on our Facebook page, Warren County T N Emergency Management Agency, or National Weather Service Nashville. If you try to Facebook search National Weather Service, you'll get about fifty of them. They're all over the place, but you'll have to put our region in specifically. Those links are there. It's free. Takes about an hour and a half. So, they're actually, typically, that's an online class, but they are actually going to host a few regionally, and one of them will be held here on October the ninth. Also, in your package, you'll notice I put some tornado information in there. That's something a little different to this report because the National Weather Service have given me some data, historically speaking, and I wanted to bring a little bit of attention to that, because as we go forward in conversations, how our county prepares for, responds to, recovers from disasters or any kind of incidents. You'll notice I broke down the information in the, at the bottom of that page. It has all the stats on it. From eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred, three reported tornadoes occurred in Warren County inside the jurisdictional boundaries of this county. From nineteen oh one to nineteen fifty, there were two. From nineteen fifty-one to the year two thousand, there's a typo there, there was ten. Now, that does not mean we had ten tornadoes during that time, and then we had five the other one hundred years. All that means is, the weather radio did not come online until mid-sixties for the National Weather Service. So, if you go back to eighteen fifty, we may have had several tornadoes. There were just really nobody there to report that tornado. It was out in the middle of nowhere. Nobody was affected. Nobody reported. So, that does not mean, we could have had more than three. Just the way it was tracked was not the same. If it didn't affect somebody or their property, it wasn't reported. Mainly, I want you to look at this, when you look at from the current year, from two, the current years, from two thousand and one to today, there has been ten. In five years, we're in the same amount of reported tornadoes as in the last fifty, the previous fifty before that. So, storms are starting to ramp up in severity and how often they occur. That's not to alarm anybody. I know we talk about this stuff, but I wanted to put something in your hand to bring you the perspective a little bit as we go forward in these conversations, to give, give you all an idea of how the scope of weather is changing. This is, I've said it before, this is not the same weather that our great, great-grandparents grew up with. It's, it is cyclical. It does change. This is disaster preparedness month across the country, the month of September. Next month is Fire Safety Month. We don't really get into severe storm awareness until March first. But it being disaster preparedness month, and we all know, see, the twenty-sixth of September's coming up pretty soon. That'll be the anniversary of Halloween. And we've had several tornadoes in Cookville and, and Clarksville and things like that right before, right around Christmas. So, just because we're not into March yet does not mean that we don't have storm threats. But, of course, you have there the activities thing that's been on E M A in the last quarters. Have any questions? I'll be happy to take those at this time.
I hear a motion, the person, the person in your crew. I got a motion, Mr. England, a second. Got a second, Mr. Ron Lee. Any questions for E M A? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to E M S, President Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen on court, y'all have a copy of our report. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. England, a second by Mr. Lee. Any questions about the report? Any no questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Cotton, financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen on the court, you have our report. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer at this time.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Johnson, a second by Mr. Stout. Any questions about the financial report? Being none, all those in favor of approving the financial report, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to our committee reports, budget, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Uh, Bill and Grant?
Uh, I want to thank Bill and Grant for their report. Let everybody know Josh and his crew from sanitation is working on the parking lot next door. So, if you see Josh, tell him thank you for doing a lot of this work in house.
Salute and honor. Econ, agriculture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other than what Jim reported on the breakfast and then the dinner, the only other announcement that I have is our regular October meeting will be a week later, October the fourteenth, due to a scheduling conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Education?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next education meeting is going to be on September the twenty-fifth at four o'clock, and if you hadn't already heard this or not, but the school board meetings are now going to be on Thursdays every month instead of Mondays. They have completely changed that. So, the school board meeting will also be that night on September the twenty-fifth, beginning at five P M. Thank you.
Uh, right now, financial matters, but does not have anything to report. We'll be having a meeting shortly. You'll get the notice. Health, the welfare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We hope to meet next month out at the health department location, if it's permissible by then, and maybe look around and see what's going on out there. So, I'll be looking for that date notice, and other than that, I don't have anything at this time.
Uh, highway bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be having a surplus equipment sale September the twenty-seventh, right out there up above the highway department at the fire grounds. If anybody's interested in coming. Thank you.
All right, policy personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we met on September seventh. We got reports from the judicial commissioner and codes officer. We had discussion about the county logo, logo licensing agreement, and county safety coordinator, Dave Breton, that now has changes in the workers' comp injured procedure. At this time, with, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Breton to come to the microphone and, and discuss this.
Yes, Commissioner, I want to basically just give you an update on a change that we're making. We're gonna start fully utilizing our county employee clinic, where all of our workers' comp activity will go through the clinic for initial evaluation. The good news for all of us there, it doesn't change anything in the comp procedures. Everybody's still got the opportunity to pick from the posted panel, and if they choose another provider, they'll still have the opportunity to go to that provider. That's per state guidelines, so we can't change that. Uh, but for those who just want to have another medical opinion, that service is free to us. It's already being paid for through the group insurance parts, so every activity that goes through the clinic, it's at no cost to us. And so, we run that through Attorney Bratcher and the insurance subcommittees, and everything is, is approved and ready to go from that standpoint, and we plan to go live October first. We actually had a test run today with the new procedures, and I left you a copy of the procedures and the posted panel at your seat, and it looks like it's gonna work out really well for us. Any questions? Any, have any questions?
No question. We, the last thing, we, our next meeting will be Thursday, October the sixth, five o'clock.
Uh, we'll now call safety, Mr. Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I have a whole lot to say, but, yeah, Jason is gonna have a hazardous waste, uh, pick a I can't remember if he's on the twenty-seventh on that Saturday or the twenty-ninth.
I think it's Josh.
Twenty-seven. I said Jason, but it's Josh. Yeah, and he's gonna have it on the twenty-seventh. That's the same day as the auction. So, if you got paint, hazardous waste that you didn't get rid of, that we took care of on that day.
All right, we appreciate that. County presidential partnership, Mr. Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, the total inmates at jail is two hundred and fifty-two, hundred ninety-three males, fifty-nine females, and fifteen T D L C. I spoke with Sheriff Anthony Day. We had a conversation, and he said the fairway break this past week. He said just a few incidents with some juveniles. He credits that to where he thinks that the mobile command unit that was posted just inside the midway on the left-hand side, I'm sure everybody's seen it, that that made a big impression, there you go, from everybody. And he said that it was very well-staffed all day long and late into the night. He said that was, you believe that helped tremendously. Also, our next meeting at the jail will be October the sixth at three thirty. Thank you, sir.
Now, legislative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
We'll move on to any public comment? We don't have any public comment tonight, so we have amended our docket to move the special presentations up. Mr. Brian, come up. Chairman will help. I'll read this proclamation and come down there and give it to you. This is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas suicide is a tremendous form of suffering and one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than twelve hundred lives lost in Tennessee each year, and estimated twenty-five attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the twelfth-leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third-leading cause of death among youth and youth and adult ages of ten to twenty-four, as well as the fourth-leading cause of death of the adults ages thirty-five to forty-four, and the eighth-leading cause of death for adults ages forty-five to fifty-four. And whereas understanding the risk of suicide can be reduced to awareness, education, and treatment, and whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee Legislature, and whereas nine hundred and eighty-eight suicide and crisis lifeline provides twenty-four-seven free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and the best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council has been appointed to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategic for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseeans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas T S P N encourages all Tennesseans to come train and play a role in suicide prevention to support quality of life. And whereas everyone can play a role in suicide prevention by learning and sharing the risks and the warning signs, decreasing the stigma as a means to promote health seeking by talking about suicide using safe messaging and sharing available resources. Now, thou I for Terry Bell, County Executive of Warren County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Tennessee, and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. And we want to, Brian, do you want to say anything?
Just remember, get the word out, nine eighty-eight is that's our resource. Text call, it's available twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
And at this time, I believe in, in what we've done as a county, our opioid committee has, has hired Mr. Keith Ford as a counselor, which I feel like is appropriate for him to come forward and introduce himself and tell a little bit about helping these people discuss the help in this situation too. Mr. Ford?
Good evening, Chairman and Counsel. I guess just a little bit about myself. Background of a preacher, of a counselor therapist, social worker, whichever one you want to say. Happy to be here for this position. I've always looked to serve where I live. I spent a lot of time on the road working for OmniVisions or Health Connect, so I've been all through middle Tennessee, so finally bringing it home. So when it comes to my background of a therapist, I'm actually taking my last test next month, and hopefully I have my big boy license, the N W I L P C. But what I want to do with this program is to help those who are struggling with addiction. There's so much that goes on in our county, and I'm thankful for, for this committee to have said, hey, this is something that we need because we do have a big issue with opioids in Warren County. Not only Warren County, but all throughout Tennessee. And so with the, hopefully we can collaborate, get some things in place to where we don't criminalize people who really need help. Because there are many times those that are seeking help but don't know how to receive the help, and maybe we can be that connecting factor to get them to rehabilitation instead of incarceration. And that is a big, big deal. So I don't have anything to report right now. I'm just making sure that I shake babies and kiss hands or kiss hands and shake babies, whichever, whichever way you're supposed to do it. Just kind of getting a lay out of the land and connecting with a lot of the resources that's already here, but if there's any way that we can help or do anything, we want to be able to do those things. So I thank you guys for, for your fault, your foresight in this and to being able to put something like this to the county.
Anybody have any questions?
I do have one question. Do you have any kids?
I have eight children and hopefully no more.
Speak louder. How many? I do want to say, I, I know, I know Keith, we used to work together, but when it comes to what we've done, and you know, we interviewed, everybody kind of knew, but he's, he's going to be a huge asset to this county. We're in a process of turning things around. And personality-wise, what you see right here is what you're going to get, so we're happy to have him.
We're glad to have you, and we want to, everybody to understand we're using the opioid abatement money that we got to fund this program, and it has to be spent on the opioid addictions. And anybody that's got a problem, please reach out, Mr. Ford, and let's see if we can get us some help. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on into business. Item number one, Warren County Safety and Health Plan Review. Got a motion about Mr. Savage. Did I hear a second? Got a second by Mr. Moffitt. This comes through, this is a regular plan that we have to do every five years. Mr. Breton? And it's just been updated a little. It's the same plan that was approved five years ago, is what it is. So it's all state mandated.
It's all state mandated, and basically been hardly no changes. And this would be good till another five years.
All right, anybody have any questions? Being none, unless it's called Roll.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Carly Graham?
Yes.
Ralph Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hamilton? Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris Breke?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Douglas Smith?
Yes.
Philip South?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
Item number one passes twenty-two to zero. We amend our docket, include one A to, I will now open the floor for nomination for Chair, President, and Captain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Terry Bell for the chair.
Second. Second, Mr. Savage. Any more nominations?
Mr. Trump? I make a motion, nomination cease and we elect by confirmation.
All right, did I hear a second? I got a second, Mr. Wilcher. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to one B, which is our committee appointments, parliamentarian, and pro temp. It's in front of you now.
I make a motion, we accept the paper that was presented by Chairman Bell.
All right, Mr. Bell, and a second by Mr. Hillis. All those in favor of the committee assignments, which is the same as they were last year, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to item number two, the airport land swap.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, everyone's got the exact same thing I do. It just says airport land swap. We'll receive on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. I know some of, some of, everybody on the Economic Agriculture Committee and the Airport Committee knows about it, but ask Mr. Dyer to, you want to speak to that just a moment to inform everyone about it?
The airport owns two small parcels of land that was bought with federal and state money. And, and the parcels were purchased so that we could control the airspace above it, basically to have the right to cut trees on it. And the idea was to continue to buy property as it became available to be able to cut the trees whenever they would grow up into the approach path. The, the new way that the state is encouraging us to do it, and it makes a whole lot of sense, is rather than buy the property, is to acquire an navigation easement, which is like a reg, regular easement only for airspace. So basically, we're buying the right to go onto somebody's property and cut the trees if they grow to a certain height in a certain area. Mr. and Mrs. Don Born own a large piece of property that is across the street from the airport. There are many trees in there that have grown up into our approach path to runway five. Today, air traffic control will not issue a, an instrument approach approval to runway five at night because of, of the trees. That, those aren't the only trees, but they're the majority of them. And so the county has negotiated a, a swap where we would trade these two parcels of land for which we have no use other than to control the trees, and acquire a navigation easement over those two pieces of property, plus the rest of, of Mr. Born's property that lies under the approach path, plus a cash payment. The, this must be approved by the FAA because it was bought with FAA funds, the, the two lots. The application is in for them to consider, but we haven't heard back yet. The state has already blessed the Aeronautics Division of the Department of Transportation.
And without this navigational easement, we get these trees down, we could be in a position to where we have to pay back a two million dollar grant.
That is correct. When the county gets a grant for these capital improvements of the airport, we, the county signs some guarantees to the federal government that we're going to take care of, of the airspace as long as, as well as everything else in the airport in order to protect the airspace. The zoning regulations are also there to keep a building from being built. But if we can acquire these navigation easements, then we have the right to take those trees down forever. And we don't have to go in and negotiate every time the, the trees grow up. And actually, the navigation easement is not just to the bottom of the approach path, but ten feet below it, so that once we cut, the trees have to grow ten feet before they pierce the approach path again.
Mr. Chairman, I also like to say that we did receive an email, all the commissioners did yesterday, about this in full, it's several pages. Also, Mr. Dyer and this commission has inherited this problem, and he's done an excellent job, and they've been a lot of hours spent on this. And it passed the Economic Agriculture Committee unanimously, and I will put this in formal motion there. We accept this?
I got a motion, Mr. Baldwin, second, Mr. Hillis. Does anybody else have any more questions about this? Because these trees have got to be trimmed, and we are at this, we are, the state is actually doing an environmental study, and the state will actually pay for cutting these trees if we get this done.
Thank you, Chairman Bell. I forgot to mention that. Right. Once we get the right to cut the trees, the state's going to do it for us.
Yeah, it won't cost us any more money. So this is our, our best way to solve this. We've got one more piece of property I need to get the easement worked out on?
Maybe two.
Maybe two. Okay. But anyway, we're working closer than we was several years ago, put it that way. Anybody else have any more questions about this land swap? Glad to answer any. Nina, and a last clerk, Call Roll?
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Carly Graham?
Yes.
Ralph Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris Breke?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Douglas Smith?
Yes.
Philip South?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
Item number two passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number three, Airport Board Appointment. Charlie Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to add that from the commissioners, for the Airport Committee, there's two seats that are open. Commissioner Brad Hillis has served his term and it is up, so the Economic Agriculture Committee nominated, voted, and passed unanimously that Ron Lee from the E and A Committee would take his place and start serving his first term. Also, the Airport Committee has brought the nomination of Jason Cribbs to be reappointed to his seat, and the Economic Agriculture Committee voted unanimously to put him back, and I make that as a motion.
I got a motion. I hear a second. Got a second, Mr. Randy England. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Jason Cribbs, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. And we will item number four. Every year at the first, at the first September meeting, we're supposed to reappoint or reappoint four Financial Management Committee members. I will now open the floor to appointments to Financial Management.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that four appointments stay the same as they was last year.
I've got a motion, Mr. Bell, and second by Mr. Prager. Any more nominations? Any more nominations? Being none, all those in favor of keeping the four appointments we have right now, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to Resolution fifteen twenty-five. Oh, this is an opioid abatement resolution. We, as we, we get emails on these constantly, these other pharmaceuticals is being sued, that we're getting these opioid payments for. And each one of them, we have to do a separate resolution to join that group, so we'll get a payment out when they actually settle out. And this is another one of the opioid abatement settlements that's being trying to be worked out right now.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, Mr. Rubble, second by Mr. Ripley. Anybody have any question about this resolution? Being none, all those in favor of approving, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We move on to Resolution number sixteen twenty twenty-five. Mr. Ron Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the Warren County Legislative Body to enter into an interlocal governmental agreement with Grundy County, Tennessee, for the provision of emergency medical services. We all know Grundy County is a big county. All their infrastructure is on top of the mountain. They have a lot of land and a lot of, of their constituents that live in the valley. Out past Scott Ruby's house, and then also out to Biola Road and Highway one away. So this would allow their nine one one, if they need, deem they need, to contact our nine one one, and our EMS would service to the foot of the mountain both ways. And this would just help our neighbors out, and we've talked about it, a, a president has, we've talked about it in our committee meetings, and this is a good deal that we could help our neighbors out. Ron Lee'd help us out if we need to do so. And I move to approve.
Second. Second. Got a motion, Mr. Lee, and a second by Mr. Prager. Anybody want to speak for this? This is only for the emergencies, this is only not for any common lessons that This is only for the emergencies, this will be not for any common lessons that happen in Grunde County. It will also have to go to Grunde County, and they will have to approve this same resolution before it will take effect.
So that's, this is just the part that's going to be in, just beyond Viola and Urban College?
Anything below the mountain takes on. They, they got the, it's a description.
Mr. Chairman, I might add something. We, President and I discussed this, and I talked with Dawn in Grunde County too, and several people approached me about it. But the, the fact of the matter is there's sometimes, their ambulance service actually has different shelters where their ambulances are located from time to time. And it could take up to forty minutes for them to make it down to the Warren County line. And President and I talked about it, and you're looking at about twenty minutes, cut it to time in half. And we know that'll eventually save a life. We, we can't ever quantify the lives that would be saved, but we know it would eventually. Thank you.
Any more questions about? All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing unanimously. We'll move on to the number, item number seven. The virtue three-year contract, Mr. Cotton, I guess you would address that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a three-year contract, uh, Clint County and Werthrew who manages the, uh, data encryption on county emails. And it will sentence about twelve hundred dollars over this three-year period.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, Mr. Stowe, second. Got a second, Mr. Bell. Any questions about the contract? This does involve money, so I will ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number seven passes twenty-two to zero. Item number eight, Mr. Cotton, a prayer to weather, two-year contract.
Here, Mr. Chairman. This is a contract between the Warren County Board of Education and Prairie Weather. This was a two-year contract for weather lightning strike monitoring for sports events. Uh, the company requires two-year contract because they're providing the equipment.
I got a motion, uh, Ms. Ross. Second by Miss Smith. Anybody have any questions? This is mandatory for these sporting events outside sporting events. They have to do this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Grant, uh, Dr. Wallace, he explained to us that this would be the one that, in sporting events, that that's the, the station that they're going to go by. You know, you'll have three or four people's got different things on their phone, and this is the one that they're going to go by. Just keep down confusion.
Any more questions? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number eight passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number nine, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment for the Highway Department. Uh, we'll see a similar amendment for the General Fund here in a little bit. Uh, this is to, uh, appropriate the funds to allow the Highway Department to purchase the copier that is currently being leased through RJU. We approved the RJU con- five-year contract last month. When we did this five, six years ago, we leased that time. And it would be to the benefit of the county if we purchase and move leasing. Um, so this is a money to take funds out of where they're currently paying lease and appropriate funds for the purchase machine, with the balance coming out from budget balance.
Got a motion, Miss Lee, second. This is it. Can you hear Mr. Prager? Second. Any questions about this amendment from the Highway Department? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number nine passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number ten, Mr. Cotton.
This is an amendment for the school system. This is the second one this year. This is to establish, uh, a line for an early, um, I think it's a, early language, uh, grant for the school system.
Got a motion, Mr. Stowe? There's a second one. He's got a second, Mr. Ross. Any questions about the budget amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number ten, budget amendment passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to budget number, number eleven. Mr. Cotton.
Here, Mr. Chairman, um, number eleven. This is the aforementioned RJU amendment for the General Fund. Uh, we've done the same thing here that we did for the highways. If we had moved funds from each department that's currently leasing, um, and then appropriated the funds for purchase into one line up with the balance coming from the fund balance.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, Mr. Rubbley. Got a second, Mr. Hillis. Any question about, uh, budget number number eleven? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yep.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number eleven, budget amendment passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number twelve, Mr. Cotton.
Uh, this is an amendment for the general sessions, uh, to appropriate funds to cover, uh, vacation payouts for our entire community.
Got a motion, Mr. Wiltshire, second by Mr. Ross. Any questions about the budget amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number twelve, motion, amendment passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to budget amendment number thirteen, which is coming out of our opioid abatement money, and only to be spent for things to have, and this is to have Mr. Key get a vehicle so we don't have to pay him mileage when he's driving back forward to meet with people and counsel him. Got a motion, Mr. Mr. England? Second by Mr. Stowe. Anybody have any questions? These are basically coming out of restricted publics now. They can only be used for certain purposes. This is one of them. Any question? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carley Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Uh, budget amendment number thirteen passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to number fourteen, which I think we want to put off. We did. We actually, we need a motion to put this off because we actually put this in there, uh, Ruppport had some extra money and they were going to run out a federal funding grant that he had, he thought would expire.
Yeah, the schedule to expire September thirtieth, he proceeded his extension this morning, uh, for another year, for another year. So we would like to put this off.
I like motion. Can we, uh, move away with this?
No, all right. I got a motion, Mr. England. I hear a second. It's there. We got a second, Mr. Martin. Uh, it was put in there to make sure we could keep that funding going if he didn't receive, receive approval before this meeting. So all of them, this, all of them, I don't think that was, I don't know what I called them. Uh, all those in favor of putting this one off, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing unanimously. We'll move on to number fifteen, the approval of the notice.
This is Liz Crouch, Ann Houston, Kimberly Hall, Lauren McCorville, Cody Lee France, Mark Seaborn, Marcy Swett, Tim Ward, Carla Savage, Kirby Williams, Tori Watts, and Lynn Gibbs.
Motion's accepted. Got a motion, Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Bobbitt. All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing unanimously. We've done our, uh, special presentation. We'll move on down to the announcement. I have several. Uh, Ms. Lisa Hobbs is here representing Ma- Magnus Library. She's had to, she's had to use some information out. Would like to come forward and say just a few things.
Hi, everybody. It's kind of surreal standing in front of you. I gave up trying to do without glasses when I get fifty. So, so it's nice to see some familiar faces and familiar faces out here tonight. Um, as, uh, Terry said, I'm here tonight representing Magnus Library. Uh, for those of you who do not know, my daughter is intern director, Karen Brown, the head of, uh, Brad Walker. He resigned. And it is my understanding that the library has not had a presence at these meetings. Um, that's going to change. So I'm here tonight to get that ball rolling. I put one of these in front of your desk before the meeting began. Uh, I'm not going to review all this, but they want to say, um, that the performance of the library had the growth, has grown year over year. Uh, this is a needed asset in the community. If you'll just look at the top line, just the patron business only, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it was almost forty-three thousand six hundred individuals who visit the library. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, that number grew to forty-six thousand, over forty-five thousand people visited the library. That is almost a two thousand six hundred increase in visitors. Um, in July of this year, um, they received three hundred and three thousand eight hundred sixty patrons. They offered twelve programs to the community. In August, they received three hundred and three thousand four hundred and sixty-one patrons. Um, and they offered eight programs. Um, the interim director has added a few notes here that she wanted me to express. Uh, the pre-K, uh, storytime has continued to grow. Uh, they plan on adding a third program starting in October. The fair went amazingly well with hundreds of people stopping by to see and asking questions, questions about the exhibits at, uh, regarding the library. Um, and she wants me to express her gratitude for your continued support for this library. And I would like to personally express my continued, uh, my appreciation for your continued support. I grew up in a library. I know the benefits of the library. I know there are people in this community that still need a free library. So thank you. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Ms. Bobbitt?
Sure.
I'd just like to tell everyone about the thing now where you can get a library card and you can check out books online. And, and some of these books are just fresh off the press.
Yes.
You don't have to pay, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty dollars for them. You can get them just as they come out.
Sometimes you gotta wait a while, but it's free. So I'm, I'm doing that now. That, that's the second line item circula- electronic circulation. It is amazing to me how many people will use that. I, I'm old. I don't want to hold that book in my hand. But for people who, uh, want to do like Tommy has done, just in the year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it's almost thirty-eight thousand people visited that site. That's amazing to me.
I've got to all.
If you don't have a library card, get you a library card.
I haven't had a library card in forty or fifty years. And it's, it's very simple. Go up there and get it.
All right. Everybody needs to go get your library card.
Get your library card. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. I have, uh, another announcement. You, you have this on your desk. Everybody's got one. They invited the commissioners to the, uh, spinning our wheels for Meals on Wheels fundraiser for Meals on Wheels. And they will be having this fundraiser. You can, the event details is Tuesday, September the twenty-third. The doors open at five-thirty and the dinner's at six o'clock. And, uh, all the, uh, commissioners are invited, but I do need a head count if you're going so they can, can get us a table. And, uh, try and have a fundraiser. So if you could, go out and support, uh, Meals on Wheels. And, uh, pass this along to anybody else that you've got out there that might come to their, their fundraiser. All right. Have, uh, a little bit of announcement on the, uh, on the mall. We got the word not too long ago that Hibbits is leaving. So we are losing Hibbits. But I am leading with a couple of prospects tomorrow to maybe move to the mall that are in Warren County. And hopefully that'll go well. And we've got another good bit of information. We tried to come up with anything to try to revive the mall. Well, this year, Warren County has recently received the twenty-five, twenty-six three-star grant award. The three-star grants are intended to develop projects that enhance our community and bring together our citizens in creative ways. This round of highly competitive funding offered opportunity to launch a much bigger project as the previous rounds that had been a fifty thousand max award. Well, we, that's what we actually got our sign out the mall. We had to add a little money to it, but most of it was three-star grant money. We actually put it in. The, we have partnered, in partnership with Main Street and McNamara in my office, an initiative was established to transform a space in the three-star mall where a community could work, study, play, and create a community hub. This partnership will also create jobs. The special needs and senior population often encounter several challenges when entering into the remaining and remaining in the workforce. This project aims to take on some of those challenges. The space will consist of a coffee shop, ice cream counter, cookies, and various other snacks and drinks. A bookstore where individuals can buy and sell and trade books. A family game area of table games, board games, card games, and other group-style games, not video. game area of table games, board games, card games, and other group-style games, not video. This space will also display many natural and historic features of Warren County through the design and decor, and will have items for sale that promote tourism in our county. Information about our area attractions, restaurants, and shopping will be available. Think of it as a chamber for the after hours and the weekends when the chamber isn't open. This space will be located at the Main Street corner directly next to the current senior center location. The award amount for this grant is $250,000 and requires no match. I would like to thank the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development for their generous opportunity to bring something unique to Warren County. Also, Main Street MacMemel for them, their enthusiasm in partnering with the county to expand the Main Street concept to other areas in our community. And I want to thank Mr. Jason Hillis, he's worked hard on this a lot of times. When you come in the office, you don't think we're doing anything, but there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, and sometimes we get to report some good news. And this is some of that good news that we get when it, when it happens. So I think this will be a big asset for our mall to bring people together and hopefully revive part of our mall back. Of course, the health department's coming along good. We should be on track to putting them in there by the first of June. So, I just had that news to report. That's all I have to report. Will I say anybody else, Chairman?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, you got a motion, Mr. Dotson? I hear a second. Second. We got a second, Mr. Wiltshire, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary, we never tease you, not on this.